Call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call Eli Badger.
I'm here.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Here.
Casey Barney.
Here.
Lee Sharps.
Here.
Fran Newton here. We're going to change up the agenda a little bit because we have some guests that we'd like, we're going to have them do their presentation so that they are free to leave although you are welcome to stay. Before we get going, are there any public comments on the agenda? No. In that case, I'm going to introduce Bill Saffian, is that correct? From the New Hampshire DOT. And Bill, would you please introduce your team?
Hello. So, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. We're here to discuss the DOT's project. It's number 24904 that will be doing preservation and reconstruction work on this bridge you're probably very familiar with, carrying US 3 and New Hampshire 25 over the Pembroke River. My name is Bill Saffian. As was introduced, I'm here with David Scott, who's the in-house design chief of the Hampshire DOT, and two representatives from, for the designer, Joseph Bickham and Sean James. And they're actually going to be doing the, any design work that's necessary for the project and also putting together the project plans. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here and present the project and also to allow representatives from Bridgewater to be here as well. That helps us to do one meeting instead of two, so thank you. And just as a side note, this is the first in a couple of meetings that we'll do regarding the project. This is a public officials meeting where this is your meeting and we're here to present to you and get your feedback on the project. Once this is done and we have any feedback from Bridgewater as well, we'll then do a couple of, or possibly two, public informational meetings where the actual public, that'll be our meeting as opposed to this being your meeting. And there we will give much of the same presentation to the public and solicit from them any thoughts they have on the project and try and incorporate those as we can into the project. So, that'll probably be in the timeframe of about six to eight weeks after tonight's meeting.
Could we have our Bridgewater guests please introduce themselves?
Firstly, Vincent Paul McGlory. I am a state representative from District 9 in Grafton County. And that includes Ashland, Bridgewater, Alexandria, Bristol, and Grafton.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm Skip Janus and I'm one of the selection in Bridgewater.
Welcome. Thank you.
So with that said, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Joseph.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Bickham. With Hoyleten Associates, we are the design engineer retained by New Hampshire DOT. We have a retaining contract with New Hampshire DOT. And then we do this type of projects all the time. So, we are in the early stages of the project. We're here to tell you about the project. We don't have any solutions yet. We have some ideas and we have some alternatives that we're looking at. So we're looking for your feedback. I have about half an hour of presentation. I have 34 slides. So let me go through all the slides and then towards the end of it, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay.
So our outline will give you some quick bridge facts. We'll tell you about the bridge, when it was constructed, what condition it is. We did an inspection back in December of last year. We found some other things that we were not aware. We are currently looking at rehabbing the structure. There's going to be some traffic control alternatives that we're looking at. Those would be the mostly, mostly what you'd be interested about the project, whether we're going to close it or whether we're going to phase it. We also have to look at the culture, natural resources of the project. We have to look at the water and right-of-the-way impacts. We don't anticipate it to be significant to the project. It's mostly going to be within existing footprint with the rehab of the bridge option. And again, we're looking for your input. So let us know if you have any concerns or if you have any other things that we should be aware. We'll tell you about the schedule as to what our anticipated schedule is for the project and then we'll answer any questions that you may have. So, as you know, the project is located about maybe a couple miles north of here. It's the US Route 3, New Hampshire Route 25. The bridge is painting the Pembroke River. We have five approach spans at 40 feet and then another approach span here at 60 feet. And then we have two truss spans which are roughly about 250 feet. That's what we're showing here on this graphic. And then we have two more approach span on the Ashland side for about 40 foot on each of those spans. So, that's a representation of the elevation view of the structure and this is the plan view. The town line, I believe, is right on the middle of the main truss, right on the center line of the pier between Ashland and Bridgewater. So, I'm constantly going to refer to the approach spans as the trestle span. So those are the approach spans on either side of the structure and then you have the truss span from here to here. So I'm going to use those terms throughout the presentation today. The bridge is about 82 years old. It was constructed in 1937. It was rehabbed 50 years later. There was a major rehab. The decking was redone. And then more recently, the structure was painted about 12 years ago in 2007. And that paint is holding up actually pretty good. As I mentioned earlier, we have seven approach span or the trestle spans. It's framed by steel stringers and floor beams. And I'll show you a little bit, a section of that. And then we have the two mains spans which are the deck trusses. The trusses are underneath the roadway and then we have the roadway on top of that. So the approach spans are conventional reinforced concrete deck, full depth. And then the truss spans are steel grid filled with concrete. Just like the name tells you, it's a grid system of steel reinforcement. And then it's filled with concrete on the top. So not conventional reinforced concrete where you see the number five or number six bars. It's a little bit different. And it's not the full depth. It's done that way in order to keep the weight of the trusses at the minimum and not have excessive weights over the truss spans. The substructures are reinforced concrete abutments on both ends, on the Ashland and the Bridgewater end. And then in between, we have the steel bends. And then, right on the middle of the river, we have the concrete pier which is in the worst condition of the substructure elements that we've seen. And I'll show you some pictures. The travelways, 27 feet from curb to curb. We have two 12-foot travel lanes and one and a half foot shoulders on either lane. The overall length is just a little bit more than 800 feet. We have the approach spans mostly on 40-foot span ranges. We have six of them on the 40-foot span. And then we have span three at 60 feet on the Bridgewater side. And then we have the two truss spans roughly at 250 feet on average. So we have two expansion joints located basically on the end of each truss and then on the center pier. Those are problematic because that's usually what fails. That's where drainage water is running underneath on the substructure causing damage. So the sketch on the left, it shows the trestle span or the approach spans I mentioned earlier. You could see here the framing. We have the steel bent supporting the superstructure. We have the steel stringers. Six lines of stringers and the floor beams frame that every 40 feet. And then we have the travelway here. We have the rail up and 27 feet from face of curb to face of curb. And you can see the overall dimension just a little bit more than 30 feet. The truss span is almost identical on the upper portion. The lower portion is supported by the actual truss itself, as I mentioned earlier. So we did inspection back in December and we used the National Bridge Inspection Standards condition ratings. On a scale zero to nine, we assign a rating for each element of the structure. So zero being the worst and nine being an excellent condition. So for the deck condition, we gave it a six. For the superstructure, we gave it a six, similar, which is satisfactory condition. The numbers may not mean much to you but the wording is important, satisfactory condition. And then the substructure is overall, it's a fair or a five. So on a scale zero to nine, it's almost halfway in the dead middle of the numbers. An overall, due to the condition of the substructure, we are assigning, for our overall bridge, we're assigning a rating of fair or a five. Just to give you a perspective as to what the condition is. So now I'm going to walk you through from the top down. I'm going to show you some pictures of the deficiencies that we've noted, starting with the pavement surface and then we're going to work our way down towards the foundation. So this is the trestle span or the approach spans, I believe, we're looking towards Bridgewater here. End of the truss, end of the approach span is right by here or on this picture here. You can see a lot of extensive cracking. Looking underneath all that cracking, the water is infiltrating through the pavement. The membrane has failed. So sometimes you see a fluorescent staining or deterioration underneath the deck. The truss span is not as bad but there is extensive cracking. When we took the photos, I believe, it was in the wintertime. So you could see all the cracks that were filled up with salt water at that time in December. And you could clearly see what the map cracking was on the truss span as well. Looking underneath, this is again on the truss span, you could see the level of deterioration that we saw underneath. This is a metal pan that's been completely corroded. It's been rusted. You could see some of the grid fill depth that I mentioned earlier. Some reinforcing that's exposed. And this is the most convivial section of the truss. Working our way in, it's not as bad but it's kind of getting out there even on the adjacent base.
On the truss span.
The trestle spans are not as bad because we have the full deck and the membrane seems to be holding a little bit better than it was on the truss span. Looking on the top on the expansion joints, there is some failure of the expansion material. It's been leaking, all that leaking water underneath, it's causing some damage into the concrete seats. So it's in need of repair, to say the least. Looking on the trestle span framing, this is a floor beam with the stringers coming in and out of the page. You could still see the paint. It was painted in 2007. I mentioned the paint is holding up pretty well for the most part. There is some section loss, meaning that the steel is not the same thickness that it was back in 1937. But it's been addressed when the rehab was done 50 years later in 1987. So, and then the paint is still there. There's no additional areas that we noted that were rusted through. Looking on the truss span, now on the floor beam deterioration, you see a little bit more. You see some of the fluorescent staining when the salt water is walking its way through the pavement and the failed membrane. It's gearing underneath into the steel. So now you're seeing some of the rusting that's been happening since 2007 after the bridge was painted. And then on this picture here, you could also see all the waveness into the top flange of the member. So that shows you how much corrosion that member has taken since it was originally built in 1937. Looking underneath into the bearings, there is some corrosion on the bearings, some of the steel members. There is some light rusting, mostly on the floor system. Once you work your way into the truss members, it's not as much rusting but there's some that would need to be addressed. And then same thing on the bearings, down below into the concrete surface, the beam seats. You see some rusting, the salt water, the snow is sitting there. So it's causing some rusting and the paint failure for the bearings there. Now we're looking on the west abutment on the Bridgewater side. There's some map cracking of the concrete. There's some spalling, some delamination, which is typical of the concrete. It's not actually that bad. We've seen worse conditions on other bridges. So it looks bad on the photos but it's not. Same thing on the length here. There's some cracking, some minor spalling and delamination of the concrete but nothing major that would raise a red flag. The river pier is the worst. You could see all the fluorescent staining. I mentioned the expansion joint on the top. So all that water is seeping underneath. And then it's causing this damage. You could see the exposed reinforcing. Some of the concrete cover is no longer there. A lot of rusting, a lot of delamination and cracking as well on the concrete surface of the main pier in the river. And then working our way towards the east abutment, you could see similar condition to what I showed earlier on the Bridgewater side. Some cracking, some minor spalling and delamination as well. But the worst condition was on the center pier that's on the river, right directly over the expansion joints. So, considering the condition of the bridge, being 82 years old, being on a satisfactory condition for the superstructure and the fair condition on the substructure, the DOT has undertaken this project to rehab it. So we are looking at different rehabilitation options. And we want to, the main goal of the rehab is to extend the service life until additional funding becomes available to do a full replacement. As you know, the full replacement is quite an undertaking at this crossing at this time. So as part of the alternative analysis that we are currently looking, would be the bridge rail replacement. We're looking to have a taller rail than what you have there now. Be aware that there've been some past accidents there. So we are going to increase the rail height. We're looking at either repairs or modifications to the trestle spans. We're looking possibly for full deck replacement on the truss spans. We investigate in different options but it looks like it'll be a full deck replacement based on where we are at this point. And then we may need to do some truss member modifications or repairs depending on which option we select. So there will be some of the structural components that we have to repair or strengthen to support the loads that we're going to put on the structure. The expansion joints are going to get replaced. There'll be some painted touch-up. Not the whole structure is going to be painted but the areas that we've seen the corrosion and the rusting, those are going to get touched up. And then obviously the substructure repairs, repairing the concrete, removing the deteriorated concrete, cleaning up the reinforced steel and then patching it up with the new concrete. We're also looking at the lifecycle cost of the rehab, at the initial cost and then what the lifecycle cost is going to be. We're looking at the traffic impact. Obviously, we want to make the bridge safer, as I mentioned, the rails. So that's going to be an improvement. And then as part of the project, we have to go through the permitting process. So we have to get the appropriate permits for the project. And then we also want to minimize the property impacts. We want to extend the service life of the structure. And then above all, we want your input to let us know if you have any concern with anything that we're presenting to you tonight here. So traffic control, I imagine we're going to get a lot of input from all of you on this subject. So, I'll go over them and then we can talk towards the end of the presentation as to how you feel about one versus the other. So there's three different options that you could do this kind of work. The first one would be phase construction. You have one lane where the workers are going to work and they have to do their work. And then all the lanes where the traffic is going to go. It would be one, two-way alternating traffic. So there is going to be signals on either end of the bridge. And then, basically, the bridge is going to get done twice because you do half the bridge and then you shift the work area from one half to the other half. So the time is going to be very extensive. And right now, we're estimating that it's going to be at least two construction seasons if we have to phase it. With the closure, you could do all the work at once. You give the work area from one end of the bridge to the other end of the bridge. You give it to the contractor and then you let them figure out how to do it. And our estimate would be that there'll likely be one construction season depending on what alternative we use for the rehab. For the detour, there's two options there. There's the north detour, which is approximately 11 miles. And I'll show you a graphic of that in a little bit. And then it's the south detour, which is a bit longer at 18 miles. The third option to do this type of construction would be to do a temporary bridge. But the temporary bridge is not feasible or cost-effective to do this crossing due to the bank-to-bank length, which is almost over 800 feet. So we kind of discounted that because it just doesn't make sense for this option. So we left with either phase construction or the bridge closure. So for the north detour, the traffic would go from exit 24 all the way up to 25. They could also use the North Ashland Road from the bridge, travel north and then come down on US Route 3. And it's about just under 11 miles long.
If you're going through the interstate.
For the south, it's a little bit longer at 18 miles. So you're going all the way down to the exit 23 and then you take in River Road all the way up to the project. So those are the two detour options that we're really looking at. I mentioned the cultural resources. As part of the project, we have to follow the Section 106, the National Historic Preservation Act. We have to look at the historic properties and archaeological resources in the area. We have to coordinate with the Division of Historic Resources, NHDHR. And then we also have to coordinate with the SHIPA, with the State Historic Preservation Officer. Once we have the game plan in place, we have to go meet with those people and we have to tell them if the project is going to have any impacts on historic properties or on any archaeological areas that may be in the vicinity of the project. We likely need to retain an architectural historian to look at the impacts to the historic structures, which is any structure over 50 years old, which makes a structure eligible to be historic. And then for archaeology part of it, NHDHR is going to tell us if they have any concerns with the staging areas or any areas that we're going to be impacting, whether we're going to be having any issues with any archaeological sites in the area. Right now, we're not aware of any of them but we have to go through all the motions. We have to tell them all about the project and then let us know if there's any concerns on their end. As part of the process, we need the, from cultural resources, we need the determination of effect. If we're going to have adverse effect to the historic properties or not, it's all part of the process. As going part of the process, we should make you aware that anyone who's interested in being a consultant party, you should contact Jamie Sikora. And you have his phone number there and email from AHW and you have to request to be a consultant party and have a say on the project as part of Section 106. I mentioned the natural resources earlier, which would be the Pembroke River. So we may need to get a, at the minimum, I believe, we may need to get a shoreline permit, which would be the simpler one, not the full one. We have to do probably the permit by notification. I don't believe we have to do a wetland permit because we may not be impacting any wetland resources but we have to go through all the motions and then we have to determine if we need that kind of permit as well. The property impacts, we're not expecting any takings or any property rights needed for the project but we are probably going to need some temporary easement from some of the nearby waters or mostly for construction access for the contractor to get down below and access the substructure areas that need repairs. So again, just to recap why we're here, we want to make sure that you're aware of the project early on. We want to coordinate between the two towns, emergency response routes, depending on the traffic control options that we select, mutual aid, school bus routes if any of that is going to change, bicycle usage, recreational usage. Any concern that you have, just let us know tonight. We're going to schedule another meeting in the near future. So you still have more opportunity to tell us other concerns. But let's start with what we have tonight, I guess, at the end of the presentation. So our next step would be to go back and evaluate the rehabilitation alternatives. Start looking at the culture and natural resources with the permitting agencies. Hold the second meeting, as Bill mentioned earlier. And then go through the full National Environmental Policy Act or DIPA Act as part of the environmental process for permitting for the project. And then, once we get all the clearances with all the permitting agencies, then we're going to continue with preliminary plans, doing the actual design, and then eventually coming up with the contract plans and documents for the contractor to be able to bid on the project. So this is a rough timeline of the anticipated schedule. We expect to start preliminary plans in the winter of 2020, next year. Contract plan to be the year after in fall of 2021. Advertise the project in January of 2022 and then begin construction in spring of 2022. And then, then date, we don't have that yet because we don't know if it's going to be phase construction or closure with the detour. That's why we're here to get our input. So I believe that concludes my presentation and we'll take any questions that you may have.
Could you define construction season? Is that like one whole year or is that part of, what is a construction season?
I believe there would be April to October.
April to October. So when you say two construction seasons, you're talking about two years worth of, okay, thank you.
With the winter shutdown.
Yeah, okay.
That kind of goes into my question. What exactly would be the time of each, the phase construction? How long would that take as opposed to the total bridge closure with the detour? What's the time?
Yeah, that's what he said, two construction seasons.
For this one?
Fazed.
Yeah.
And then one for the closure.
Right.
Yeah, just why ask the question?
So with phase, you kind of have to do the work twice. You set up half the bridge and then you do the other half. That's why it's taken longer. The timeline that I gave you is very preliminary. We don't have all the answers right now. We're still looking. We are in early stages. It's just for comparison purposes. So you could see that if we close it, it's going to be less inconvenient and not very inconvenient.
So maximum is two.
Yeah.
Maximum is two seasons.
Yeah.
Right now.
I don't think we have any going over. I don't think Bridgewater has any coming this way, do you?
No, but we have.
We have our fire chief here. I mean, you should ask, in terms of safety and fire safety, you guys cross that bridge?
Yeah. Do you want to go first?
You go ahead.
As far as Bridgewater goes, emergency service-wise, Ashland is a huge part of this side of Bridgewater and Upper River Roads. So I mean, it would be, I mean, you said you're...
We'd delay response time certainly.
I mean, you couldn't go around. It would be, it would just be too long.
Yeah.
All of the emergency services. And as far as, I live on River Road. I don't think I want a detour up River Road either. You can move it over to 132 and let your handful deal with most of it.
Wow, that's a good point.
Yes.
I live on North Ashland Road so I wouldn't want the detour on my road either. The last time they, when they did the work on the bridge, when they painted it, it took a very long time. It was the phase.
Yeah, it was.
And, gosh, I think it took two seasons, actually. I've been, if you recreate on the river and go under the bridge, it's frightening. When I was handed to this, I said, I remarked to the town manager, I said, "You should see the abutment. You can see the rebar. Lo and behold, there's the picture. This is frightening to see and that's the center."
Correct.
That's what holds up the center of the bridge. Ashland just completed their hazard mitigation plan. It's on its way to FEMA now for approval, I believe. And this was one of our main emergency routes for the town. So that has to be kept into consideration. I do believe the bus to Plymouth High School goes over the bridge also. It goes a partway up North Ashland Road. It reverses its direction and I assume it goes through Bridgewater and not back onto the highway to go all the way around.
No, you're right.
My question is, you said that it's satisfactory but you're not going to go to construction for another three years? Is the bridge safe for three years? The bridge is safe as it stands right now. The numbers that I mentioned to you, those represent the condition on the scale zero to nine. So five, it's a fair condition. It's not anything that you should be alarmed about.
It's a four.
Well, it's not redlined.
It's not redlined.
It's not redlined.
No, no.
My other question is for the state, has there been appropriation to repair the bridge in three years?
We have, the money is allowed for the construction right now. We don't have the budget finalized. We currently have $6 million allowed for the rehab.
Another point is the Bridgewater biomass plant, that's the route that most of the chip haulers take to deliver to the biomass plant. For them to go around North Ashland Road, that would increase the traffic quite a bit with heavy, you know, very big tractor trailers. I don't know if it would impact the business, adding on to their drive time. I wouldn't think they'd want to go all the way down River Road with those big trucks.
No, they have to go up the highway. Holding this exit and coming through.
If they're coming from the north, then they, you know, they'd have to get off in Plymouth and go down to Main.
Through Main Street, yeah.
A nightmare.
Yeah, yeah. So I thought I'd mention it because that is off the highway. That is the quickest route to the drop-off point.
Yes.
Can you comment on the process for making the decision to go one way or the other, a single season or to close it or two seasons to keep it open halfway?
Right. Yeah, so right now, we gather all input. We're trying to hear what you have to say for one option or other. And then we're going to investigate all those options and then we would cost each one of them. And then we work with the DOT. And then the DOT would have the final say, I believe, as to which option they'll go with. We are the consulting engineers. We'd make a recommendation to the DOT based on the feedback that we all hear tonight. And the DOT would make the final decision.
Who will the DOT decide? There's got to be a... There's got to be a person that says.
That would be often, it'd be our administrator and our front office, we'd give our recommendation to our front office, and ultimately, I guess, the commissioner would make that decision through the front office representation.
Okay, and relative to how the public feels about the final decision, whichever way it goes, is there an appeals process to change it to the other choice?
I don't know if there's a formal appeals process. I will chip in that we have had some projects that just totally languished because one clear decision couldn't be made. We have to get to this bridge sooner rather than later, or rehabilitation will no longer be an option, and once this thing starts to get blow posted. It would make it more difficult to see the project come to fruition. So we are here tonight looking for the input to try and get some consensus. Our preference would certainly be do it in one season. You know, be phased construction, be motorist delay from one end of the bridge to the other, waiting for that green light to change. You said we did the painting phase and the.
I think it took two seasons.
But, I mean, as you're waiting at the green light, at the red light, waiting for it to change, waiting for it to change.
It's been a long delay.
Yes.
And to experience that for two seasons, that would be painful.
Well, the message is, a consensus approach is best. We would love a consensus on.
A follow-up question has to do with, how many times with projects like this do you actually do the closure? So in the past, when you've done these sort of projects, which, what are the numbers in terms of close it versus keep it open for two construction seasons?
I have done it in Raymond, I have done it in Hopkinton. Have you done, have you had the luxury? Well, when you can get the contractor a clean slate and say.
And close it?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've identified two locations that you're aware of.
At least two.
But how many times have you done the procedure, roughly?
How many times have we done this type of work? 10 to 12 projects like this a year, probably.
Okay, and you've only closed it completely one or two times that you're aware of. That's just a data point for me, that's my only trust.
But keep in mind the length of the bridge, and the length of delay, and the length of construction. I'm trying to sell the closure option, and I understand that it's got some disadvantages.
I understand that, but my primary concern is public safety, understood? And so, that's where I'm coming from, on making the choice here.
Absolutely.
What's historical data that tells us one way or another, and what the reasons may be for.
And every bridge site is different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because it's 50, 50 years old.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Are they looking for a more solid answer? Are they looking for a more solid answer, or no?
They're going to have a second, they're going to have a second meeting, there'll be another public hearing, yeah.
If you have any other questions or concerns going into the future, you're welcome to contact us at the DOT.
Great.
Well, I would ask, if we could just hit those bullet points, are you guys aware of any butter concerns?
On the Bridgewater side, the turnout, as you're going towards Bridgewater, where that's where they put a lot of their staging up when they did the painting, they did it mostly on the Bridgewater side, not on the Ashland side, there was no place to put it.
I don't know, I still think that's in the right of way of Route 3.
Okay.
Oh, that, you know where I'm talking about, yeah. I don't know who lives there, but.
Pretty sure that's, it would still be in the right of way.
Okay, we've heard about emergency responses, mutual aid, school bus routes, bike routes, bike usage.
The shoulders are so narrow, most people don't ride, yeah, no. It'd be taking, it'd be dangerous, yeah. That's why they use North Ashland Road instead.
That, and when you're riding across it, having done it several times, the railing that's on there now.
It's too low.
Your, just about seat height.
No, thank you.
I wouldn't, well, I will ask, river recreational usage, the contractor will either be coming down from the top to repair the pier, or up from the bottom, but are there concerns about river canoes, kayaks?
Well, there is a outfit out of Camden that rents kayaks, that they put out, they unload in Plymouth and pick up in Bristol.
But I should.
Or Bridgewater, yeah.
I should think the impact would be the same, whether it's a closure or a.
Well, I don't know, it's like, this time of the year, the water's so shallow.
Yeah, yeah.
It depends on how you do the work.
And I appreciate it would be the same impact, but if we didn't know of any canoes, then we might allow the company to do something that would impact the business if we didn't have the. Local events and impacts, any parades, any old home days?
Not to go across the bridge.
No, yeah.
Well, the 4th of July, big event, people coming from all different directions.
It's not a parade, it's a parade of visitors.
Right, excessive traffic.
Yeah, more traffic, right.
Okay. Bridge safety concerns, I'm sure the narrowness is a concern, are there bridge safety concerns?
Other than he said the railing, the railing is low.
Thank you, I hadn't noted that, it was here, it wasn't from here. And any other concerns?
The only other concern I would have is that this be the iterative process that you have presented that it is, by getting different audiences to give the same answers, they get some things that those of us here may not have thought of.
Right, absolutely.
And that's the intention for us coming back to a public meeting, to try and get a broader, while first having the opportunity to incorporate some of the thoughts that you guys have.
I'd like to just suggest that that be done well and advertised well, we don't get an after, after-effect impact.
Yep.
Those that decide not to show up to the hearing, and then when the, and then when the decision to.
Starts happening.
Water, you know, has an impact, and they don't like it, they need to be informed about it.
Motorcycle week, that's a main, that's a main way to get.
I don't mind inconvenience motorcycles.
But they go up North Ashland Road instead, or down River.
Don't mind that at all?
Our public outreach for the next meeting is typically three or four weeks in advance, we'll give a press release, we will be asking the town, both towns, to put up some posters, notices, we will ask you to put it up on your own websites, we will send out letters to the butters.
Immediate butters.
Immediate butters. If there are other groups that we should be reaching out to, the canoe group.
Yeah, that's Camden Ski Fanatics, they're located in Camden.
Okay.
Pemmy River Local Advisory Committee.
We will reach out to all those advisory groups as well, and we will reach out to our elected representatives also.
Charlie, you have this on electronic copy, PowerPoint?
Yeah, okay.
So we can put that up on the site?
We'll put that up on the web, yeah.
Website, good idea, yeah.
Good idea.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Big project.
Yes.
Yes.
Be grateful when it's done, one way or another.
The general consensus I'm hearing, if you are leaning towards.
Phase.
Phase, just for life safety, if nothing else, that concerns me, but anyway, thank you so much, we will talk again. And you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but I suspect you'll want to leave.
You always say that.
That's a gracious offer.
Their days are over.
Five minutes before.
Yeah, we'll just take about a five-minute break while they're taking their stuff down, and then we'll resume. We had scheduled a public hearing to discuss Ashland water rates and user charges. Charlie, you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, I am going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we delay that vote. We just recently, at the end of last week, I got the asset management rate study, I think two days is not enough time for us to go ahead and prepare. So I think the board should wait on that, I think we should have another meeting to discuss how we want to design this rate, to take another, a vote at a later date.
How long are you anticipating delaying this? I only ask because just for the public information, before our town government changed, the Water and Sewer Commissioners had proposed bringing the rates back to what they were in, what, 2000?
Yes.
And for a variety of reasons, that never took effect, and I think we have an issue with revenue on the water side, and I don't want to see this delayed very much longer. I mean, we really need to figure this out, because we need to cover our, not only our operational costs, but our capital costs with water.
And I think, I printed, I've looked at the spreadsheets, it, I think that we could have, if we can meet with interested parties, we could actually take a look at what this entails and have a more rational answer. Yes, indeed, the Commissioners had said raise it back up to 585, and that was a preliminary raise until we could get the asset management information in. We have some of it, we have to look at the impact of what this will do, we have to look at the CIP aspects of this.
Right.
Because that will.
That affects your rate.
That affects your rate.
Absolutely.
Whether or not these projects are implemented, for example, the exchange in the fire hydrants, some water line replacements, those are projects that have big financial impact, and whether or not you decide to implement those in the next two to three years, is going to determine how your rate is structured.
I think we need to have a sit-down with Rusty, so we can get his input.
And I would suggest the former Commissioners, because they've spent two or three years working on this, so.
I believe the Commissioners could offer some background that we do need to make decisions on this. So yes, we should, we should involve them.
Yes.
So when's a good day to meet again to discuss?
How quickly can, you know, do we need any more information before we have this other meeting?
The only.
Need time to review it, Charlie.
You need time to review it, yes. The one thing that would change it a little bit is we just prepared the budget, the budget, the new budget could be uploaded. Right now, would it incur an assumed increase of about 3% on the budget? That would change it a little bit. Other than that, you can really, the spreadsheet that they created, I think it's pretty impressive myself, whereas you can really change the things in that to determine where you want to land on that rate.
Could we meet a week from today?
You'd have to look at them.
Eli?
I, I can.
Dave?
My wife lets me.
So we just have to check with Alan, but we have at least two of the Commissioners that'd be willing to meet a week from today.
The Water and Sewer Conference Room?
Yes.
At like 10 o'clock?
That's fine, Casey won't be able to come, but, or we can do it in the evening.
It would still be the conference room?
Yeah, it still, it still should be that conference room.
Yeah.
We can, we can put those.
The TV would be helpful.
We can put those spreadsheets up on the screen.
What's the date?
What is the date?
23rd.
Thank you, 23rd.
He said it's at 7:00.
It'd have to be at like 7:00 PM on Next Monday.
Okay, so we'll do it at 10:00 in the morning then. Thank you, thank you, Casey. Yeah. 10:00, all right? All right, if you can.
And I don't suspect there'd be a vote there, Casey.
Yeah, no, there's no vote.
This is informational.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we'll vote on it for another meeting.
We have to run a few audits.
Yes, we do. All right, we have some minutes to approve from September 3rd.
I have some corrections.
Okay.
Page 2, line 12, it should be voted nay, N-A-Y, not nah.
I like nah.
Nah, nah. I corrected you, it was half a no before here.
Nah, better than nope.
Line 31.
N-A-Y.
It's a little awkward, the, it says, as when the committee, probably just delete as, when the committee was established.
Which line are you on, page 2 or 31?
31.
Page 2.
I have more to add to that paragraph.
Okay, I've got a couple more, then you can go at it.
Oh, okay.
Page 3, line 15, Selectmen shops requested prior vote by the board about the duties of the chairman to be revisited.
Yeah, because you can't request a project.
Well, I have a lot of paragraphs.
And Selectmen shops enumerated, that's, that was my, that was my choices.
Well, I have some other stuff to.
All right, then we'll wait till you do yours.
And then line 30, it's, then it got kind of vague, like what was passed by the town, I think it should be more polished, Ashland has already enacted this ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, man.
Like, like, like that.
Sorry, Charlie.
Like that, man.
I've been busy and I'm trying to get to.
No, no, it's funny, because he does well, then all of a sudden it kind of goes, you kicks in.
I didn't even get that one.
I didn't get these, I had, I'm under time constraints, and I make myself laugh more, like what was passed by the town.
Yeah.
So how do you want it to run?
I have, wait a minute, let me put my glasses back on. Period after ordinances.
Yeah.
Strike rest of that input, Ashland has already enacted this ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. That's good, Kathleen.
Okay, Lee, your turn.
Okay, let me see, page 2.
You know, they'd get a laugh out of this when they read these in 20 years.
Yeah.
This is true. Line 25, board members discussed having the meeting at the school cafeteria instead of the school gymnasium, but this was not accepted for 2020.
Okay.
So that we have it on record.
That we're not changing.
Yes, that we're not.
Which line are you on?
25, after, instead of the school gymnasium, but this was not accepted for 2020. Line 30, after the word Selectmen, it should say need, not needed. Line 33, where it says, Selectmen discuss the liability risk for the town having the event, and whether the committee should, and add in there, should perhaps be an.
You shouldn't use the word perhaps.
Whether the committee.
Should consider.
Well, yeah, could consider, should consider being an independent committee on its own, giving it more control.
Independent committee means that it's on its own.
Control, yeah.
Right, so that it doesn't sound like that we just want to do away with it, make it sound, because that's what, that's what it's going to be about.
So what should it be?
Whether the committee should be independent, giving it more control, giving.
No, independent means.
Yeah, just independent.
Should be independent, period.
Okay, independent, right, should be independent, and then take out under the board.
Yep.
Take, just take out under the board.
Yes.
Not as a town committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, line 43, felt the representation should be done by the town manager and DPW director.
You want his name?
Yeah, right, the DPW director and the board agreed.
Definitely.
The board agreed, so that's in there. And then, under 46, "Recent watershed committee," in between "recent" and "watershed," it should say "big and little squam lakes," watershed.
Yeah.
Just to define it. See what the heck I did? Oh, and line 2, it should say...
On page 3, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, on page 3. Line 2, it should, also it should say, "Currently, there is no build-out around Ashland that could affect the shore and water quality and estimated there won't be for at least 20 years." And then you could take out the whole lines 4 and 5, take it out, and just poop. Line 4, "After water quality, period, then watershed committee intends on continuing the water quality of the squam lakes." And then after that, where it says, "Sharps take out would like the study to include Ashland River," and instead say, "Sharps told the committee she wants the squam river in Ashland to be included more in the studies." I just want to get it in the minutes because it's important that, in the future, that we know that we wanted our, that part of the river to be included. Line 14, "Under meeting agenda, public comment section, after revote on how they want to proceed with this agenda item, and she will bring it up at the September 16th meeting."
What line is that?
Maybe.
Maybe.
What line?
13, after where it says...
Agenda item.
"How to proceed with this agenda item and will bring it up at the September 16th meeting."
Oh, oh, okay.
See, under Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda...
Yes, got you.
Where? I don't...
Under Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda, Public Comment Section.
Line 10.
Okay, Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda, Public Comment Section. Selectmen Sharps felt in March 2020...
Yep.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah, and then just add, "After agenda item and will bring it up at September 16th meeting." That's what I said then, but just because of time tonight, we probably won't do it until next night.
Whenever.
But that's what I said. And then, under the next paragraph, "To duties of the chairman." "Selectmen Sharps requested a prior vote by the board about..." Not duties of the, " requested a prior vote by the board about maintaining order at meetings."
Yep.
Not the duties of the chairman.
Right.
And then, and then to continue, "Selectmen Sharps, three duties, noted, three duties of the chairman are," and then, and then those three. And then, under "Recended motion," line 22, "Ask that person to," and then take out, "Ask that person to leave or ask an officer to remove a citizen," period, "and observe the superseding right to no law, giving the power to the chair. Board agreed by consensus unanimously, this power should only be by the chairman." And then my only other thing was, line 42, where it says, "Position to an applicant," we should add the name of the applicant because it's public information.
No.
No, no. Person now, that will accept.
Oh, after it accepts, okay.
He doesn't accept it.
Oh, true.
Okay.
That's it. Bush, you want me to start over again?
No, please, no, I got it, I got it.
Anything else?
Like, like, okay.
Like, I'm like, I'm like that.
Like, is that okay, life?
Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
It's Y-E-A-H.
Is that Y-A-Y or?
Y-E-A-H.
All right, moving back to new business. A memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Ashland School District and Town of Ashland, discussing the use of facilities as mass care shelters at Ashland Elementary School.
I thought it sounded good.
Any, any comments?
I got quite my attention, oh, probably early August, that if you look at the bottom of the original, I don't know if I sent you the original document.
No, I did see the original.
But it was revised, last revised in 2002. You know, Carol brought it to my attention that perhaps we should review that.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely dated.
And so I approached the principal at the school and spoke with her, so this is my proposal for a change to the other document, just very, very minor changes. But in its, it would be, I guess, signed by the same individuals, the chairman of the board, Select, and the chairman of the Ashland School Board. But I do think it's important to involve the school in it as this is their facility. And if there's something in there they're not happy with, I think they should have input. So I sent it along to the principal and I'm waiting for response to that.
Okay, okay.
I don't know that there's any real hurry, but I wanted the board to be aware that this is in progress.
Okay.
And it is part of our emergency operation plan.
Right.
And so, I mean, we had to have this in place going forward.
Thank you, Steve. Let us know what the school board says and, you know, we will approve this at a future meeting.
I think we're finding we have quite a few old agreements, contracts that are quite outdated. Some are not dated, some are not signed, that we need, when they, when they come across, that we take care of them.
And we do need to vote to allow the chairperson to sign.
Did you want, you to vote now?
No, he's waiting for the principal.
Not really here from the principal.
Well, early, but I need, it's quite possible the principal would have some input, or the school board may have some input. So my next step would be that, once I get it back from the principal, that it goes, she brings it to the school board and they talk about it, and then...
And then we get it.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a few more weeks.
Yep, okay, great. Town auditor selections.
Yes, that's me.
That's you.
Okay. What's the part?
Did you want to say something else?
Did you want to say something else?
It wasn't on the agenda, but it is, it is connected to the emergency operation plan. I think I checked out to everyone too, that, I heard from June Darnell, that the hazard mitigation plan is now at FEMA.
Okay.
And we should be hearing very shortly, then we, we'll get it back when we have to approve. But also, we're due for our three-year review of the emergency operation plan. And looking at the assignments of who's responsible for all the various ESFs on the, in the document, there are only, there are two here tonight. And I would ask that they look at the ESFs. I'll send you an email, giving you the information, but just look at the ESFs regarding public works, and there's one regarding law enforcement and public safety. And again, no hurry on it, you know, just if you look it over and there's any, any issues with it, then just, you know, reach out. One I know is that some of the players have changed.
Yes.
Two new department heads. And I just want to make sure you folks have emergency operation plans.
Yeah.
Have access to them.
I have one down there.
Okay, good, very good.
For the public, what's an EFS?
Yeah, Real House.
You said...
Emergency.
Yeah, function, emergency staff function. So it's, there are different ESFs, some involve health and welfare, some involve town government, some, you know, they involve different agencies, some involve the shelter. And also going down through that list today, when I got this notice, I'm noticing how many of those positions, we don't have a public information officer, we don't have a shelter manager, and we don't have a volunteer manager. So there are a lot of positions that are unfilled. And we need to start doing something about that, you know, getting people that might be interested in, in working in those capacities in common emergency.
Especially...
That's what that whole plan is about.
And we have had to open the shelter twice in the last 15 years, 20 years, twice.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Auditor.
Yes, our agreement with Melanson and Heath, who is our current auditor, has, the three-year agreement has expired. They have completed this year's audit, and in a couple months, we're about ready to get going on the next audit. But Melanson and Heath, I mean, sent me a proposal, and it made me reach out to a couple other firms to sort of, I guess you could say, price shop, so to speak. And the three are, basically, these are called the three major players, I would think you would say, in the industry for towns, municipalities audits. Melanson and Heath, Vashon Clukay and Company, and Plaznick. Melanson and Heath initially offered us a contract for this year for $27,000 that includes the utilities.
Yep.
They said if we extended it out for two years, they would reduce the cost to $19,000. Vashon Clukay came back at $20,900. That also includes the enterprise funds, and they would charge us lower if the actual work, if they didn't do as much work, so to speak. Plaznick and Sanderson offered a three-year contract with us for $19,000 per year, and they give us the discretion for two additionally one-year options. Long story short, myself and staff, we wanted to recommend to go with Plaznick and Sanderson. I know they're, they're in many towns. I feel as though we've been with Melanson for three years and we should probably get a second set of eyes, so to speak.
Yep, that's always a good idea.
A fresh set of eyes.
Fresh set of eyes on our finances.
Okay.
And we have Robin now, finance officer, that needs to be included in this.
Yep.
And maybe it will be to everyone's advantage that she stops fresh with, with a new team.
So was this $19,000 including water and sewer and electric?
Yes.
Okay, so it's considerably less expensive, and if they have a good reputation, I see no reason not to give them a try.
Right.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
All right, a motion to recommend Plaznick and Sanderson as our new auditors?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
For the discussion. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
I just want to point out for the public that how, how streamlined this is now that we have a town manager, because this probably could have taken us two meetings to say, would you please look into other...
Yes, yes, thank you, Lee, for pointing that out, yes.
It is, yes. Absolutely would have taken us another month, it could have. We could have had, asked him to...
Now we have a little extra help in the office.
Yes, it's great.
Yeah.
It's definitely an improvement. Okay, Ashland Headworks and Septage Receiving Project.
Yeah, this one, I'm requesting that the Board of Selectmen vote to change our Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan agreement from 10 years to 20 years. Initially, when we were offered this, the commissioners signed up for a 10-year agreement. For cash flow purposes, I think we would be better suited to be in a 20-year agreement. The expectations, I think, with the 10-year were impartially due that Septage Receiving revenue would be much higher than what it is. Our revenues for Septage Receiving right now are down.
Can, can we still pay it off sooner? I mean, is it, I mean, you could pay...
There's no penalty for...
Okay.
So if there's an uptick, we can pay a little more?
Eli, comments?
What's the cost difference? Well, right now, we would be looking at at least a $200,000 year principal payment if we went 10 years. The rates have lowered as of August, before we were looking at about a 2.7 rate, now in August, they were just updated to 2%.
And overall, what's the difference in cost?
And the other aspect is the principal forgiveness is lower than, excuse me, it went higher because of the loan went up. So before, we were at a little bit over 200, now it's at 300. Because, again, we're on a $2 million loan, not a 1.5. It just honestly, it offers the department more financial flexibility that they need.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then the recommended motion is to request that the loan agreement with the State of New Hampshire Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund Program and the Town of Town for the Headworks and Septage Receiving Facility Project be changed from a 10-year principal repayment to a 20-year principal repayment. Is there a second?
A second.
For the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Lee, you had something you wanted to bring up on the new business?
Yes, I have one thing. I'd like to make a motion that we formally appoint our negotiating team to work on the, with the union, being our town manager, Charlie Smith, Eli Badger, and Kathleen DeWolf.
Okay.
And a team, as our negotiating team to represent our town.
All right, I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Eli Badger, Kathleen DeWolf, and Charlie Smith as our negotiating team, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's great, thank you. And thank you guys for your help.
Lot of work.
Any other new business? All right, old business, town manager updates?
You know, something, I'm going to go off topic here for a little bit of a second, but I wanted to acknowledge our first, no, this is to acknowledge the work that DPW and the police department and the fire does. I don't know if anyone caught the news tonight, but there was an explosion that happened in Farmington, Maine, that kind of hits close to me, I have family that lives up there, and a firefighter passed away. And, you know, these guys are our first responders, and I think what you guys do should be acknowledged very highly. I mean, you know, to think, you know, some of my family knew these firefighters. My father-in-law, he was a firefighter, my family knows firefighters up there, and you know, these guys are running into that.
Yep.
You know, they're the first people there, and it's a pretty sad situation that happened, but, you know, thanks to you guys for your service to the town.
And having just celebrated the 18-year anniversary of 9/11, we can never forget what the first responders sacrificed.
Good point, yes.
It's a debt that can never be repaid, then, because those who survived are still ill, and we are forever grateful for all of the work that you guys do and your team, so please extend our gratitude as well. We should never take it for granted.
Yes, and I think, I think that some people...
Well said.
People get...
Thank you, Charlie, for bringing that up.
Yes, excellent.
We need to be reminded.
Okay, so let's get into some more details of what's been going on. The library had 536 people visit the library in August, and they added 28 books for adults and 22 books for children last month. The Friends of the Library will hold a book sale during the townwide yard sale, which is this Saturday, September 21st, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Friends are, I think that's the Friends of the Library?
Yep.
Yeah, are sponsoring the program, Understanding Bobcats in New Hampshire. This program will presented by New Hampshire Fishing Game and will be held on October 16th at 6:30 PM at the Booster Club.
Is that the high school students, the Bobcats?
No.
No, I'm kidding.
The Beemines.
If you have to, screen...
You look to the audience.
Yeah, like I did.
Okay, the movie, A Dog's Journey, based on the book by W. Bruce Cameron, will be shown at the library on Tuesday, October 1st at 6:00 PM. And our monthly favorite quote from Director Reimberg, "Some books leave us free and some books make us free."
That's nice.
Ralph Waldo Emerson.
Now, Charlie, I have been asked, because of your age, if you even knew who Ralph Waldo Emerson was.
He does, he knows that one.
No, no, well, thanks for entering for him, but this is a quiz.
But he didn't know who Frank Zappa was, so.
Knew it was, and inherent, no, no, it's music. Knew it was, and inherent, no, no, it's music. So to all of you out there that ask that thrilling question, Charlie does know who Ralph Waldo Emerson is, in case you were concerned.
Excellent.
In case you were concerned.
All right, moving on.
Continuing on, Parks and Rec, the last day of summer camp was August 9th. They had 35 kids in the program over the summer in seven weeks of camp with many great trips and adventure adventures. The beach is no longer open, the lifeguards aren't on duty, the last day was August 18th. You can swim at your own risk, but the lines are coming out after Labor Day. Craig, did you guys take those lines out?
We have taken the handicap ramp out, but we've never been asked to take the lines out yet.
November 1st to do that.
It's a little chilly.
The ramp is out, but have never been asked, but I guess we could do it if, they're still there.
Okay.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind. The first day of school was August 26th. The after-school program is up and running and has 22 kids in the program as of today, and she continues to get food at an affordable price from New Hampshire Food Bank.
I have a question for Park and Rec. I mean, if you could find out, I'm just wondering where we are, or where Anne is, as far as fundraising for the park?
For the playground?
For the playground, because I noticed this evening, I was down there, and a couple of parents also asked me, the paving on the basketball court is so cracked, there's grass growing up in the cracks, and I'm concerned about liability of kids falling and cutting themselves or whatever. Could you ask if we could have an update on that, maybe on where our fundraising is?
No, it's only for the playground equipment, I think.
Well, we should get some kind of a report on that, because it isn't good.
The basketball court?
The basketball court, if maybe we could just ask her...
I'd talk with Anne about it.
Okay, good.
We, it's something that her and I have talked about for the past couple of months now.
Oh, good.
We repaired all that last year. We dug all the cracks out by hand and filled them in with the maintenance. It's a three-part system.
Yep.
Takes forever to do it, but it just doesn't, it didn't seem to hold up over the winter. So I think her and I, it's in need of, I think, a professional touch.
Yeah.
So I had suggested I did some, a little bit of research for it. There's one...
Oh, good.
Company, right in Guilford, that can do it, and there's, one of the most notable ones is probably Vermont Tennis Courts. But the Guilford one seems to be pretty, pretty good work, too. I just did a little research for it.
All right.
But there's two options. They can router those cracks out, like you see them do on the highway.
Yep.
They take a machine and they actually router them, and that's probably what it needs, but it may be too far gone that it needs to be overlaid.
The whole thing, yeah.
With just an inch of pavement. So they clean the cracks out, they crack seal it, and then overlay it, just like we do when we enrode, and then put the epoxy paint over it. But that's not cheap, it's not anything that's in our budget for maintenance.
Right.
It may be upwards of 15,000 to 20,000 to do both of those.
Well, I was wondering if we could get an estimate if we need to have it in a warrant article, or, you know...
But I don't know if this, it's a busy time for her.
Right.
She's working, but I told her, let me know when I can number it.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you, folks, but she hasn't gotten back to me yet, so, but I can still help her do that and meet with people while she's working, you know?
That'd be great.
So if that's something Charlie wants to talk to her about, just let me know, and I'll try to get some numbers for her.
Thanks, Craig.
That's why we tried to change...
I think it's important.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to change the Capital Reserve Fund to build it in ground.
Yes.
Yeah.
Help out Parks and Rec.
We can try again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Police Department in August had 348 dispatch service calls, 100 incidents, let's see, excuse me, nine arrests, two warrants, one accident, 54 citations, no parking tickets. Officer Moretto finished his 16-week-long police academy, and he has started field training, otherwise known as FTO, with Officer Scrufford. Interesting point about Officer Moretto that happened at the academy, he was selected to give the speech representing the class at the academy.
Nice.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Martine.
Wrong English. Chief Olwick's proud to announce that Gary Boulay came to Ashland P.D. to be the new sergeant. He has 15 years of experience. We, you folks met him last year.
Yes, that was very nice, too.
The new cruiser, actually, I think, pickup truck, was finally arrived, and it's getting outfitted.
I saw it.
Great.
Cool.
Yep.
Ufitted.
The Ashland P.D. assisted the DEA with arrest in a resident of Ashland for a federal charge of possession with intent to distribute. They are currently consistently working with other agencies to eradicate the drug activity in town, to make the streets safer for the community. Chief appreciates the effort that the public puts forward to inform us, them, of any illegal activity in town.
And good work.
Yes, thank you.
Good work, chief.
I don't know if you noticed, in August, the Chief Olwick and Lieutenant Gray were stuck on the tops with Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, it's on the picture.
That was not on purpose. It gets stuck. It was part of the cops on top for Special Olympics. They took donations, and overall, the five agencies that were involved, they collected $3,400.
Nice.
Fire Department Chief Heath, his department responded to 33 calls in August, 19 of which were during the day. This is part of the per diem, new staff in, and from tone to leaving the station, it was a response time of 1 minute and 17 seconds.
Fabulous, fabulous.
Wow.
Excellent.
Of those, they did three ambulance transports for the month. Medical emergencies, they responded to 21 calls, nine fire rescue calls, two motor vehicle accidents, and a service call. Back to the per diem, the crews continue to complete projects on a daily basis, conduct truck checks, station cleaning, and training. Very great program. I'm glad the voters approved it, and I think it's been quite helpful to the department. Mike Steve?
Obviously paying off for the town.
Paying off for the town, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Regular training for the department in August, this involves entering and emergency exit of buildings through windows and EMS training involved in pediatric transport. The backup cameras have finally been installed on Engine 1, Ladder 1, Ambulance 1, and Utility 1. Steve mentioned earlier about the hazard mitigation plan being sent off to FEMA. They're starting the process for reimbursement for the grant funding for that. Life safety code inspections continue for both assembly and rental occupancies. NFIRS reports for August were reviewed and sent to the State Fire Marshal's Office. Deputy Buske has completed quality assurance reviews of all TEMSIS reports for medical incidents. Water and Sewer Department, I'm going to start off saying, the Headworks and Septage Receiving building has been framed. This isn't on here, but I talked to Rusty this morning. They're busy down there this week. They're putting on the siding, they're backfilling the building, they're going to start paving in a couple of weeks. Moving forward with that project, that's for sure.
We've had good weather, too.
Mm-hmm.
More times than not.
Maintenance, the Water and Sewer has a few water meter repairs. They've been doing some mowing at the facilities at the water plant, brush cutting on the right-of-ways. There's a gate valve and sewer manhole cover work on Highland Street. This is for...
Person hole.
Person?
Person hole. They made that a law in California.
I'm okay with that.
Me, too.
Okay. This is for Highland Street, that NHDOT is coming through to pave.
When are they going to do that? Are they just going to show up one day?
All right, I'm going to steal the thunder for Craig. It's September 24th.
Oh, wow.
It's down below. Paving on Highland is scheduled for September 24th.
Oh, wow.
But they've already moved it twice on us.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's why, that's why I asked.
Yep. Uh, they, let's see.
When they get there is when it's going to stop.
They're running out of time, right?
Really?
The ground's going to freeze pretty soon.
Well, you can find them.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
All right. Uh, let's see, the install, the railing upstairs at the new office on Collin Street, that's basically, that's above the Water and Sewer Conference Room. Service generator at the water plant, all water and sewer flow meters calibrated by AD Instruments. Plant activities, department completed all permits required, lab tests, monthly bacteria pH and alkalinity tests for the water system. DPW is pretty busy, the site work for the new building at the transit station was completed. This included a four-foot-high wall, 32 by 60 feet, that was installed by the Public Works. The building was constructed by Reese Construction. I think Craig's just got some paving left to do. You going to pave that whole section in there?
Yeah, it's going to be paved, so we can actually put things in there.
Nice.
And that's part of the transit station road being paved, too, at the same time?
Yeah, it's all part of that road.
Yeah, and the paving, we're probably going to do the same paving at the Septage Receiving Station, too. It's all going to be done.
At the same time.
At the same time, yeah. This is, the Headworks Septage Receiving paving, they did want to push that back to the spring, but since they were coming through for DPW, we were able to get them to just do it now.
Oh, that's good.
Good.
DPW is in the process of moving the other storage areas to prepare for the scales. Work on the scales has begun. That's going to continue all month. The actual scale would be done, moved in in October. The scale appears have been poured, and ramp approach will be poured next, and as I just mentioned, the pavings in the next couple of weeks. Albrook Road was ditched and graded along with Sanborn Road. Roadside mowing was completed in August. As we just mentioned, paving on Highland Streets scheduled for September 24th, which is next week. DPW prepared their section of Highland Street that included ditching along the roadside, raising the catch basins nearly 10 inches in some areas. It took two employees, six days to complete, so a lot of work that had to be done. They made some road repairs to Winter Street, laid down eight tons of hop-top filling in low areas of that road.
Set near the bridge?
Yeah. It's smooth now, pretty smooth. A lot better than it was.
We ditched Avery, they ditched Avery Street and cut brush from both sides of the road. Lampert Road had been ditched and graded. DPW continues to do minor repairs to their roads as needed. However, this is interesting, cold patch or potholes is only available in bag form.
Oh, no.
That's more expensive.
Uh-uh.
Can only be used in worst holes, but cold patch will not be available until late October.
I think, Craig, you told us about that a few months ago, that it was unavailable, which is...
Why is that?
They only make it in the spring and fall, but with all of the bad weather we have in the spring.
They use it all, yeah.
It's literally a mountain of that stuff, and it's just weird, it's all the bad.
Wow.
Wow.
And just for a bag of cold patch, $14 a bag.
Wow.
And normally, it takes a bag per hole, usually.
Wow.
It doesn't go far, and it's very expensive.
Okay.
That's incredible.
Project list.
Project list, the Ashland Properties LW Packard Mill Site. We had the walkthrough for the feasibility grant. Warren Street Architects, Novus Engineering, the Fire Department was there, DPW, myself. Oof.
Yeah. It's fascinating, isn't it?
It's the second time I've toured it.
Yeah, it's grim.
Yeah, it's in some rough shape.
When do we, when can we expect their report?
Warren Street told me in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
That would be nice.
So...
Okay.
We shall see. No real updates on the Thompson Street project. Are we putting that back on? The Warren Orange? That's a question for the Selectmen.
I think we have to.
Yep.
I think we have to.
Me, too.
I believe Craig has...
An alternative.
An alternate, a stopgap for this.
Well, now that you brought it up, maybe we should meet and just discuss it.
I think we should.
I think so.
That'd be great.
Do you have a meeting this scheduled for 10 o'clock next week?
Yeah.
Maybe I can...
That would be nice.
Yeah, please.
That'd be nice. Great.
I think so, too.
Just decide what we want to do.
Yeah.
Sorry to steal your thunder, Charlie, on that, but sorry.
No, no, but you know, at least Craig was able to...
Good to know.
At least now that he's could meet with us.
Okay.
Tap Grant, we're waiting to hear back from...
Next spring? You really think it's going to be next spring?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this project, yeah, yeah, it's moving right along.
Moving right, it's already seven years.
It's been four years.
Yeah.
It's in its almost final phases. I mean, we're waiting to hear back from DOT about the easements that they have to approve. I sent you guys some information on that. Then, once that's approved from them, we'll go back to, for the temporary construction easements for the people that have property along the way. And then, and then it goes out the bit. I don't foresee anything else holding it up.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Now, they will be shutting down half of them.
Half of the lane, yes.
Yeah, half the road.
Yeah.
So we can expect delays.
Mm-huh.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Williams Architect, last, Norman was on vacation, and hopefully, we can get this back.
The clock is ticking, it's going to be done by December.
The clock's ticking on him, yes.
Yes, okay.
Was this, well, which one? Well, it says, it said, project start date was June of 2016, and down previous of July of 2015.
15.
Or July 15.
That's how long it's taken them to do it.
It's July 15.
July 15 was my update.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, not 2015. Then let's put a 2019.
Yeah, 7/15/19.
It went backwards, Eli, it went backwards.
That would look better.
Yeah.
But it's taken much longer than I think any of us expected.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2016 was when, I think, Sue McCloud applied for that.
Yeah.
G.I.S., we just waited to get more funded for that, so it's on hold. The Whipple House, the Board of Selectmen sent a memo to AHS terminating the lease agreement. I have not heard a response from them. Town personnel policy, hopefully, we can address that by the end of the year to coincide with the negotiations for CBA and solar. We did, since I wrote this, we did get a proposal from Tangent.
John Garen?
Yeah, Tangent.
Yeah.
I would suggest we put it on hold until we have the electric department stabilized. We're at, we're in no position...
It was just, it wasn't really, it was just a FYI. It wasn't really something we had to decide.
But he's called, yeah, but he's called Charlie quite a few times, I think.
We can just tell him that...
Right now, we're in no position yet.
We can't do anything definite.
Yeah. Okay, any other old business? Select word items, we still need to meet to finalize the evaluation criteria.
Oh, yeah.